Good morning and welcome to the August 9, 2018 Business Meeting. And Mr. Krupp?
Yes, good morning Commissioners. We have Mr. Stephen Madcor here representing the County Council's office. And Mary Rathke, serving as your clerk to the Board. I will start the roll with Commissioner Humberson.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Mr. Savas.
Here.
Chair Bernard. Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, this week is, or today, is Employee Appreciation Week, right? That's correct. And so that's why we're all, well, some of us are wearing county shirts. But there's a lot of people in the audience, I think you should come every week.
They actually have to work, Jim.
Oh.
I hate to tell you that, but...
Anyway, Don, what's up? Well, so we have a presentation, and we're actually going to be something entirely new this year. I'm going to invite Jackie Nersky, who's with our A-Team here, to kind of explain what we're doing. And we say A-Team, and of course, A-Team stands for Activities Team. It was a group of employees convened by predecessor of mine, actually several predecessors ago, to have folks engaged in finding ways to connect employees with activities, to get to know each other, support, improve morale, and overall help shape a positive culture here at Clackamas County. And when we started it as the Activities Team, I think A really stands for Awesome Team. The role they do in putting on events, and particularly this week for Employee Week and the picnic, it's just fabulous stuff. So Jackie, I'll hand it off to you, and we'll get started.
Perfect. So I just wanted to let you all know that this year, we have changed our award ceremony to the Spirit of Excellence Award Ceremony. And this is the sixth year that the A-Team has partnered with HR to bring you the Awards of Excellence. Previously, we awarded the Bravo of Excellence Award, and have recently changed our award to honor those that embody our core values, which is spirit. In the past over year, over 100 bravos were submitted, and 10 of these bravos were selected by a Leadership Committee members to receive the Spirit of Excellence Awards. So here to speak a little bit more about is Commissioner, County Commissioner Chair Jim Bernard and County Administrator Don Krupp.
I didn't know I was speaking about this, Don. You didn't know you were speaking? So what we're doing is we're presenting the awards here rather than at the picnic. Alright, so somebody gave me some talking points.
How do you know why I said that, you know, you guys do the work?
And yeah, and it's kind of like animal control with us.
Yeah.
The Spirit of...
You play yourself.
The Spirit of Excellence Award is an excellent venue to commend staff on outstanding work that they do for the county. The county cannot function without dedicated, energetic, and caring employees. These employees have shown compassion and understanding for the need to take one, take on an extra task, to go an extra mile for other coworkers and citizens. Yeah, so, you know, in addition to renaming the awards from the Bravo Awards to the Spirit Awards, one of the other things that we're doing that's different this year is having these awards presented here, so we can acknowledge this great work on the part of our awardees in front of the Board and on television, so that the public gets a chance to hear about the many great things that we're doing here. In past years, we've handed these awards out at the picnic itself. We're always kind of competing with the band a bit, and the hot weather, and the conversations over barbecue lunch. And so we thought we'd give this a shot here and see how we can do it. I think it's a great way to highlight for the public, just really all the wonderful things folks are doing here. And I just want to thank those of you who are here, because we're here to really honor you for our Spirit of Excellence. And we're talking service, professionalism, integrity, respect, individual accountability, and trust. You represent our core values. And so those employees that are receiving this award are valued for their ability to represent Clackamas County here within the organization, but also outside in the community. So I'm going to ask Jackie then to introduce the awardees. And Tamara and I, I guess, are going to be handing out the awards and the envelopes, so...
Thank you. I just wanted to, you know, appreciate and thank Chair Bernard, as well as Administrator Krupp, for their words that they said, and open this up to the time to anybody, any of the Commissioners, if they want to make any comments or say anything themselves this time.
Ken?
Well, in the relatively short time I've been here, the thing that has struck me in going to the luncheons that acknowledge folks for their length of service is the incredible professionalism that our people show, the dedication to the work, and the talent. It really does make our job a lot easier, that we have that kind of talent working for our citizens and for us. And when I go to community meetings, the one thing I never have to do is defend some bad behavior or something of that nature. But most of the time, I hear positive things about our people, what they do, and how hard they work. So it's very much appreciated, and it's a heck of a team.
Thank you.
Paul?
Yeah, I just want to say that in seven and a half years here, it's been one thing that strikes me more than anything about the Appreciate Our Employees, our Employee Recognition Lunch, under your five-year, 10-year, 15, 20 years. I learned really a lot about our employees, what they do, and more about the county. And I have really, I go to everyone I can possibly go to, and I stay as long as I can stay, and usually I stay through the whole thing. But to hear, you know, what you all do is really valuable, and I just want to convey for those that are not here in the room today, that that's something that, you know, we value and we truly mean. This event after the meeting today, the little barbecue or the event outside, is not as fulfilling as those recognitions. I mean, it's a good thing, don't get me wrong, it's a good thing. But having that every month, to be able to hear all those things and meet some of you, has been very rewarding for me. And I know, I just say that we cannot, and we've heard this from us before, we cannot do the good work we do without all of you. And so you're truly appreciated, and just want you all to know that.
Martha?
Yeah, I was just thinking about it this morning ironically, because I knew these awards are coming up. And I was talking to a staff person this morning, and I said, "Well, I mostly see my job as clearing the way for your job." That basically, we are successful because all of you folks are successful. And it's our job to make that space for innovation, for the work that you do, for the heart that you bring to it, for the strength that you bring to it. And I'm just, I just feel so lucky every day to be with folks like you, and it's a privilege to work with you, to make and to serve our public, and to make this county a better place.
Well, again, I've been here almost a decade now. Martha's been here longer, she left for a while, so we always are.
Just two years.
As a senior Commissioner. But for 10 years at the Recognition Lunches, you know, five years, 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, and I think we've had a couple of 40 years, guess they couldn't find another job, but...
Where's John Robbins when we need him?
I just, first thing, I learned so much about what we do. I've been arguing for years about a system I call Speed Dating, where we can go around and meet everybody and find out what they do. And the Employee Recognition Lunches, if you have an opportunity to go, you're celebrating five, 10, whatever, years, please go and tell us about yourself, and tell us what you do, because you do amazing work. I'm just awe-inspired every time I have an opportunity to listen to the hard work you do and the respect you deserve as employees of the county, and the service you provide to Clackamas County residents is beyond outstanding. And I think that if everyone had an opportunity, who lives in the county, to hear about the work you do, they would be inspired. And, you know, we have a lot of change going on in this county. Don's leaving, a lot of people are retiring, and there's a lot of opportunity here in the county that I hope you all reach out and do your best to, you know, move up the ladder, respond to the needs of the citizens, and I'm really excited about the change. Not that Don's leaving. But thank you, thank you very much. So Sonia?
Yeah, I think it's evident from hearing from my colleagues that we all, upon this dais, embrace the core values of Clackamas County, our spirit of service, professionalism, integrity, respect, and professionalism. And I think also what we have in this county that is pretty special is that we want to be a welcoming and inclusive county that values equity, diversity, and inclusion. So my charge to everyone is to continue to go forth and do the amazing work, and just know that if things get rough, or there are times when things don't quite feel right in line with our values, you have an administration and a County Board of Commissioners that really cares, and we will work to continue on the path of improvement and acceptance for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your words. This year, we placed all of submissions of the Spirit Awards of Excellence here on this table. And you're welcome to come view them after the Business Meeting and see what they were actually nominated for. And when a special also thank you goes out to all of our Spirit of Excellence Award winners from your County HR and A-Team, and to the Leadership Committee Group that did all of their great work on the Spirit of Clackamas County. At this time, I will read the name and department of each recipient. When you hear your name, please make your way up to the front to receive your certificate from Don. And once you've received your certificate, if you can line up behind his chair, starting there, and then once everybody has received their certificate, we'll come up here and take a picture with the Commissioners. First, can we have John Evans from Business and Community Services in CPRD? Candace Gage from H3S Behavioral Health. Next, can I have Ired Solis Valbuena from H3S in Social Services. I would like Lori Stomps to come up, please, from H3S Community Development. Marco Enciso from H3S Admin. Rachel Croft from H3S Behavioral Health. Next, can we please have Sherry Mackey from H3S Social Services. Next, can we have Teresa Morehouse from H3S Health Centers. And Roxanne Fisher from Finance. And I offered to sit down, but they said no. So Jackie Nersky from Disaster Management.
Now, looking at the list, I was going to say, and I think I'm safe to say, go ahead and take Friday off. Alright, picture?
Picture? And we go? The Commissioners will come down.
Take Friday off.
Do it. You guys decide. I'll be there. Okay. Where you going? They're like, "No, you do." "No, I don't." I might need to... One, two, three. One, two, three. Congratulations. Family.
Oh, Claire. Oh, Chris Christopherson. Do we have any blue cards?
So Les isn't here today.
See that?
I know.
Just wait a minute for people to clear, and then... Claire, go ahead and come on up. I don't recognize you without a hat on.
Well, you know, the light in here is really nice and low, so it doesn't... Oh, hey, Claire. Once in a while, and without my earphones, too. I can handle one person talking at times these days.
Yeah, well, you're the only one who gave us a blue card today, so we're going to give you four minutes.
No, no, I'm usually short-winded, short on this, but yeah, Claire Clock, retired farmer, conservation specialist, Clackamas Conservation District. And today, I have to come with a little bit of a, I would say that I went, I was a bit embarrassed at the recent LCDC meeting, when the major topic was industrial development in the form of solar array on 72 acres in Clackamas County. It just didn't seem to be with the green ribbon sustainability that I've heard in the county over the last 20 years that I've worked in the county. So, and that was on farm and forest land. The justification, you know, being a farmer, 100 hives on a 72-acre piece, I think that was a bit of a lame type of an excuse. And I would more like to think that maybe 1,000 hives, or something that was really a commercial viable type of operation. The other thing is the placement of that particular industrial thing. We have hundreds of acres of industrial buildings on the Clackamas Flats out there on 224 that we could plant those things on, over at Wilsonville, and other things. And, you know, working with private business and private partners to place those in those areas would be, would be, what I think would be better. The other thing is just a reminder that we do have OSU Extension Economics, SWCDs, and other farm and forest experts that can help make decisions. So just wanted to, it's sort of eaten on me, so I just had to let you know. And like I said, to see us in a statewide light like that, it didn't make me feel good.
So I'm a little confused on, you know, that was, in all the years I've been here, that issue is the most, one of the most challenging. And that is...
Yes, sir.
Protecting farmland and producing low-carbon electricity. And we really debated that, and it's one of those, for me, one of the farms suggested that they couldn't even grow trees on it. The other one was of higher quality. And we debated that subject quite a bit, on what to do. And what you just said was you have concerns about putting solar arrays on farms when we have all these buildings that could have solar arrays, correct?
That's one of the, that's one of the options that we could do it. There's other properties, too, that could be forest land, too, but also in the area like in the Stafford Triangle, where you have rolling hills, it's not as good for farm, not really good for production agriculture. And I have advocated in the past that you could put two-story industrial buildings, warehouses on those instead of the one-story. So there's other kinds of options that are that way. Yeah.
Paul?
Yeah, so Claire, thank you for coming and expressing, you know, your thoughts on this. And I'm going to take advantage of this opportunity, just to share some of my, at least my feelings about this. It's odd, and we've set it up here on the dais, I think there's a level of agreement that we find some state planning goals, which I, you know, I respect those state planning goals, but we're at odds with some of those state planning goals, where they're in conflict. And I think the general principle of if there is some farm, a section of a farm property or farmland that is not farmable, because it's got some issue, whether it's rock or bad soil, or there's a history of not really being productive, and it's otherwise fallow, you know, that putting a solar array there complements one of the state planning goals and still manages to provide some financial benefit to make perhaps a working farm more economically feasible, right? There's a yin and a yang, there's a balance, right? In a general, and I'm not saying each of these are necessarily fall into that category, but in general, that concept, and that putting a solar array there versus farming might actually benefit, because the land, again, under the scenario that the land's really not farmable, won't jeopardize the water table, where on a similar piece of land, a marijuana operation would fit there just fine, right? And it would actually, in some cases, actually draw down the water table and jeopardize that, and something that might be even more economically beneficial for the property owner, which might actually create more challenges for the future of what we consider farming, right? So here we have these two competing issues, and I think that either of the two, as neighbors, I'm hearing from neighbors, that they don't really like the unsightliness of a solar array or a marijuana operation, or the lighting, or the activity. But we really find ourselves really struggling. Is this what Clackamas County is supposed to look like? Is this what it's supposed to feel like? But solar arrays don't stink, right? Marijuana farms do stink, right? Some people, you know, like me, are allergic to that, and actually causing, right now for me, some problems, because I have a neighbor nearby, probably a legitimate one, growing the minimum he can in the urban area. But I'm having, I'm having some headaches and a lot of things associated with reaction from allergy reaction. I can only imagine what that's like in these larger areas outside the farm, and some people are telling me what that's like. But we have a lot of conflicts, and it's very hard, because a property owner has a right to apply. And if they fit, if they fit the definition of the, for the planning code and meet all those requirements, we need to process that. And if we don't process it, then it gets appealed by someone. And in this case, it's very odd, because this was going all the way to LCDC, but I hope that we can get some guidance out of LCDC and DLCD, and get some clarification as to some of those unanswered questions. What do they prioritize more? And we need to look at, beyond the solar arrays issues, and look at the marijuana impacts, because I don't think they're all really good on behalf of farmers, as we consider our, some of those folks consider themselves.
Yeah, and that's the clarification, that's one of the testimonies to LCDC that I was talking about, is making more of a permit rules and looking at those types of things. And I do. Down in the South County area, there's land that is nothing but rock. I mean, you're right, in those particular cases, and that would be, of course, case-by-case basis. But most of Clackamas County is pretty productive as far as forest production, and we do have forest site ability classes. You can go to your own county forest department and find those out, that was easy enough. But anyway, it is difficult, but it just, it disturbed me that we were in the limelight as trying to do that in Clackamas County. So appreciate, and appreciate your hard decisions that you make on this and other subjects.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for coming.
The hardest decisions we ever have to make up here are the choices between two good things. And that's exactly what this one was. And...
Or the choice between two bad things.
Bad things. Well, you say no to both of those, that's not so bad. But some of the things that we had to consider, and we did consider in the decisions that we made, and they have to do both with the applicant's requirements to do something like this, as well as the land use issues themselves. These kinds of facilities have to be located within two miles of a substation, for starters. That automatically limits the number of properties that would ever be available. Then the other things that we looked at is the quality of the land, and whether or not it had been farmed, or, and whether or not it could be farmed. One hadn't been farmed in over 20 years, and had a little bit of minor wetland on it, and there was no intention by the owner to do any farming on it. The other one had had two separate crops, one had been strawberries, the other had been trees, both had failed. That particular owner had other lands that he was farming on, but this would do what Commissioner Bernard indicated, that it would make the overall production on his property a positive thing. So we're sitting there, and we're going, and the state's already made a deal to eliminate coal-fired power coming into Oregon within 20 years. If we're going to do that, we have to have an alternative. How do we get that alternative? Those were the issues that we weighed when we made the decision. And I, it's probably one of, what, in a year and a half? I can't think of any other decisions where the Board was three and two. We almost never are. And I have said to so many people, "Tell us who was wrong." Because I, you know, I voted for them, a couple of my colleagues voted the other way, but I can't say that they were wrong. We were simply trying to weigh two positive values, and two of us put the value one way, and three of us put the value the other day. Nobody was wrong. So now LCDC's going to tell us what to do. That's really what it's going to come down to. But I just want you to know, that was the thinking and the process that went on, and it wasn't just, it was not cavalier. We really tried to think this through the best way we could, and balance, as Commissioner Savas says, two competing... two competing statewide goals. And that's where we landed.
Thank you. And, you know, we've gone well over our four minutes. But to, to, to finish, I understand that because people complain about wind power and they complain about geothermal power, like in southeast Oregon. And where are we going to get these renewable sources without filling the atmosphere with carbon? And so we do have to give in that way. We would rather be renewable, a safe renewable power than nuclear or, or coal.
I just want to add, I think Ken's wrong. The LC, the EC told us who was right, and it was the two that voted no.
Whichever.
I want to also thank you because you're a watchdog for Clackamas County. He was down in Florence for the Urban Rural Reserves.
Yeah, I know.
I was surprised to see you show up and hear you're down there watching this solar stuff. So thanks for being the watchdog. Appreciate it.
Done a lot of good stuff, Claire. Your watershed work and everything else and concern about farmland is just good work. So I just want to acknowledge that we appreciate you.
Yeah, it sort of never goes away. Thank you. Have a good day.
Well, the next item is a public hearing. Don?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider a resolution for a Clackamas County supplemental budget that is greater than ten percent and a budget reduction for fiscal year 2018, 2019. And we have our recently appointed interim finance director, Krista Wolf, here to present this item to you. So welcome, Krista.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Krista Wolf, interim finance director. Today I have before you a request to approve a resolution for a supplemental budget of greater than ten percent. So from time to time during the course of the year, departments need to adjust revenues or expenditures for unanticipated amounts. And we have an opportunity to do that through ORS 294. And this is the tool that we use. We use a supplemental budget. And this one happens to be greater than ten percent. And I only have one item to present to you today. And that is a request for the Damascus Successor Agency Fund to recognize additional fund balance and budget for the taxpayer refund check dispersments. So we are requesting an increase in fund balance of $1,110,306. And with that, I am, if there are any questions, I can answer those. And if not, I'm respectfully requesting your approval.
Okay, any questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone would like to testify on this matter. Don, could you hold the crowd back?
I will try.
Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reduction for fiscal year 2018, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
They moved in second that we approve a resolution for Clackamas County supplemental budget greater than ten percent and budget reduction for fiscal year 2018, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? A motion carries. Next item is the consent agenda. I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval for the Public Health Division to apply for the strategic strategies for policy and environmental change, tobacco-free grant opportunity, approval of amendment to the cooperation agreement with the Friends of the Estacada Community Center for the re-roof and HVAC replacement project, approval to apply to the Tri-County Metropolitan Transportation District of Oregon for regional coordination program funds to support last mile and commuter shuttle service in underserved areas of Clackamas County, approval of an intra-agency funding agreement with the Department of Transportation and Development for reimbursing Public Health Division fifty percent of the cost of a full-time employee to conduct health and community impact assessment. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas River Water relating to the Hatton Road paving project, approval of a contract with Braun Construction and Design for the southeast Last Road Improvement Project. Under our Finance Department, approval of amendment number three to the contract with ABC Roofing for the re-roofing of multiple building projects and roofing services. Under elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under Technology Services, approval to amend a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Clackamas Education Service District. Under the Development Agency, approval of granting a permanent right-of-way easement on southeast Last Road for road purposes. And under Service District Number Five, approval of a board order certifying the 2018-2019 assessment role for Clackamas County Service District Number Five, which is our street lighting. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Do any Commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda for discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? With that, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. With that, I'll turn to County Administrator for an update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got a couple of items to share with you. First is congratulations to our Finance Department. They have again been recognized for excellence in financial reporting by the Government Finance Officers Association. We received a certificate of achievement for our comprehensive annual financial report. And this is really the highest form of recognition in governmental accounting and financial reporting in the country. So I want to just say a very nice job to our finance staff for the hard work that they put into doing that on time and being very accurate. Then next, I wanted to let you know that our community really continues to take advantage of our, we have a free loan program for providing portable recycling containers at public events. And we have some one hundred and seventy folding recycling containers. All but two of them were put into use last weekend. And so that's just a sign of people's interest in using them and using them for recycling purposes. Thanks to our Sustainability and Solid Waste Program for make it ease, making it easier for people to be able to pair recycling with garbage services and help foster a culture of waste reduction here at home, at work, and on the go. And then finally, I wanted to share with you a special note of appreciation for one of our employees with the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. There was recently a TV news story on KPTV that had featured about how many people who use the Clackamas River for recreation oftentimes leave behind a lot of trash, which is pretty unfortunate. But the news piece had talked to a couple of residents who actually volunteer their time on their own to remove this trash. One of them just happened to be Tina Johnson, who works for our North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. So I just kind of wanted to share that with you and thank Tina for her generosity and her effort to help make this community a better place. The things that she does on her volunteer time has a real effect on people and the well-being and quality of life here in Clackamas County. So thank you, Tina, and also to all residents who share in doing that kind of help and volunteer work in our community. And that's it.
Thank you, Don. Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just, I'll just hit three highlights so that we could get going today. One is I went on a West Lynn Police Department ride-along the other night. Very peaceful community, I might, I might add. But what I'm, what I'm trying to do is go on ride-alongs with every one of our local police departments and find out a little bit more about what goes on in their communities at night and how they interact with our Sheriff's Department when they have to support one another and see how that's going. So that was an interesting and long day. The other day, I had the pleasure of going up to Mount Hood to represent this board at a Chamber of Commerce breakfast where the volunteers who worked on the first annual marathon from Mount Hood to Sandy were acknowledged by the Chamber of Commerce and given their own medals for their participation and help on that marathon. It was quite successful. They had sixteen hundred runners for the very first, for a very first one. They intend to do it again. And by the way, it was a qualifier for the Boston Marathon.
Oh, wow.
So for those of you out there listening who actually would like to try and qualify for the Boston Marathon, we have a nice local run that you can do right up there on Mount Hood that would qualify you for it. And then the last one was yesterday Martha and I both went to Connecting the Connectors. With our CLT project that we are working on, one of the side
What's CLT?
Cross laminated timber, thank you. Why did I think you might ask that? One of the side benefits may well be that some of the fifty metals manufacturers that we have here in Clackamas County may have the opportunity to manufacture the metal connectors that are involved in building these buildings. This could obviously help stimulate our local economy and provide more jobs and more profits for the businesses. So it was a very successful event. And somebody would ask, well, how do you know it was successful? When you have an event like this and, and the moderator says, after this is over, we'll have a half an hour or so where you can hang around and talk to the panelists. If people don't bolt for the door and they actually do hang around and talk to the panelists, you know it was a pretty successful event. So hopefully that will help stimulate and generate some more business for our business community. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any dogs today?
I have the done. Dog. Almost got there. This is Lady. She is a sophisticated lady looking for the perfect forever home. She is a mature nineteen-year-old, but as, a nine-year-old. But as they say, age is only a number. She is still interested in long walks around the neighborhood or some light hiking. She will need a home with children over the age of thirteen. If she sounds like the lady of your dreams, come down to meet her today. For more information about Lady and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at (503) 655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So this week I've been thinking a lot about how we invest our resources and prevent things that create quality communities. And our work as Commissioners, we do so much of that. And I just wanted to highlight a few things. I had a wonderful connection with Dr. Utterback, who is the superintendent of our North Clackamas School District. As we all know, we have been connecting and talking with our superintendents about how we can move the dial forward and collaborate and connect more effectively. Really important that we focus on where we see the common needs. And one of those is suicide prevention for our youth. It's a real challenge in Clackamas County. And we are working really diligently through our efforts and I know with the schools in moving, making things better and prevention. Prevention is key. Another area that I wanted to talk about, I had the wonderful honor and blessing of being part of an effort in Lake Oswego. Months ago, I had met with a group of citizens who were very, felt very disenfranchised and lacked trust in government and basically challenged me, well, why should we have trust in government? We've been asking for this stop sign for years and years and years, and we have not been heard. And I said, well, I don't have jurisdiction over Lake Oswego, but I sure have some friends in Lake Oswego. And I'm going to talk to some of the city council and see what we can do. Well, long story short, Councilor Jackie Mans took the lead in Lake Oswego. The stop sign went up and we had a ribbon cutting a couple days ago. And keeping communities safe, prevention, community safety, really important. It's what we do as elected officials, as ombudsmen. We work to prevent challenges in the future. Another area I just have to mention, Youth Theater for Change is a program that changes young people's lives. They get together, they go through a process where they write their own theater production. And my husband Kirk Mauser's been, had the wonderful honor and privilege of being part of this since its inception. Their performance is Tuesday. It is called Turn Straight: Youth Theater for Change. They have written it, the students will perform it. And it will be at Clackamas Community College on August fourteenth at seven PM at the Osterman Theater there at Clackamas Community College. So we all know, I've talked a lot about how I love theater. I've seen a lot of theater in my years. I was a thespian in high school. I performed in theater. I was on theater scholarship in college. Every year I have seen this performance, I have been more moved in this theatrical performance than of any of the theater that I've performed in or been an audience member of. I really encourage people to come and see it. It's open to the public. It is free. There is a five-dollar suggested donation. And I will guarantee you that this performance will really mean a lot to everyone, not just the students, but for the audience. Connection, creating community connection is how we work to build quality of life. And it's really important. So there you go.
Great. Thank you, Martha.
Oh, wow. Well, it's been a busy week. Commissioner Savas and I actually talked to constituents yesterday dealing with issues that, I'm grappling with whether or not we need to get a little more involved in it. And that is river erosion issues on the Willamette River because of heavy boating. I guess it's called wakeboarding? Wakeboarding. And it seems to be causing quite a bit of environmental impact. So we had a group of constituents, they took me on the river and actually saw it and actually went, floated to Representative Kennermer's house where he had big chunks of his. And, and it's interesting because you have a number of state agencies, but there's no there, there about who's really responsible for this or what we need to do to maybe help mitigate some of that erosion, you know? So we had a discussion about it. And I hope at some point I can bring it up under issues and we can decide as a, as a commission, do we really, do we really want to take a closer look at this? I know that there's going to be a legislative look at it. And I'm just wondering if that's something we should be tracking in the future. It's a problem on the Upper River and the Lower River. And, you know, we do a lot of work with retributaries. That's one of the things I learned yesterday from the Clackamas River and some of those smaller and with culvert repair and those kinds of things. But the main stem of the river, the Willamette, is something that lies within our umbrella and, you know, really is one of the hearts of our community. So, and particularly since we're working to unlock the locks, that is, that is potentially going to increase river traffic as well. So just, just was a good meeting and really great people. I'm glad to announce the Tourism Development Council, we have our MOU finished. Yay! Everybody's happy. I was at the meeting the other day, they do fantastic work. They're like the master marketers of Clackamas County that bring people here. And I'm always impressed by the professionalism of Danielle Cowan and her staff and how well that they have managed, really, really making tourism an award-winning agency here in Clackamas County. Connecting the Connectors, Ken talked about that. And lastly, I'm, I'm going to, before I go into arts and culture and the word of the week, I wanted to remind people that there's high to extreme fire danger across Oregon. And I've been getting the Oregon Department of Forestry updates, information from their Fire Protection Public Information Officer. And it has been very, very difficult out there. You know, the Miles Columbus Snowshoe and Round Top fires, you know, are happening where we have incident managers. We're even pulling firefighters in from New Zealand evidently because our own firefighters are, you know, need to get a break from some of this. There's the, oh gosh, the Miles Fire, the Snowshoe Fire. There's been over three thousand acres there. There's over twenty thousand acres in the South Valley Fire. There's the Garner Complex Fire. And that's been thousands of acres, about eight thousand acres on, on that one. Taylor Creek Fire. I can go on and on, but I think the issue is please use extreme caution out in our forests and when you go recreate, even on our waterways. When, last night when I was driving around and I saw how red the sun was from the haze, that is not just from California, which is now experiencing the largest fire that it's had ever in its history. It is also from the fires that we are experiencing in our rural counties. And if, if my colleagues would like, I could make sure that you get this information forwarded. I've been calling our colleagues in those fire-touch counties just to say, we're thinking of you. I don't know if there's anything we can do, but we, we understand the kinds of difficulties this is causing for you and for your constituents. of difficulties this is causing for you and for your constituents in your county." So, been a real hot, it's gonna be a hot, long summer out there, folks, so please use caution. Okay, word of the week? Nebulous. It's an adjective, it means vague. Did you know if someone is cloudy or hazy, something is cloudy or hazy, it's nebulous? The word is derived from nebula, a wispy mass of interstellar gas or dust. Well, that's a great word. The librarian noted the nebulous, nebulous look on the children's faces when she explained the joy of opening a book to read instead of reading it on a screen. And thanks to Kevin who pulls me, gives me the word of the week every week. And finally, arts and culture in the county, and Commissioner Fisher, look what's there. Clackamas County Arts Alliance Youth Theater for Change Program, and I know that Kirk's been working on that, Tuesday, August fourteenth, seven PM, Osterman Theater. And then, in our own neck of the woods, Art in the Dark, Ten Laws with Live Music by East Forest, suspended in trees, surrounded by beauty and illuminated by the stars. Art in the Dark is a fantastical illuminated full-length evening production set in a unique and rare outdoor theater-style setting, transforming a dirt plot into a performance spot. Each show is packed with the flavor of the Northwest and a wonderful taste of the talent this area has to offer. August Sunday, August ninth through twelfth, seating opens at seven thirty. Show begins at dark, eight forty-five PM at Mary S. Young Park in West Lynn. Finally, Clackamas Repertory Theater, Annie is Going Great Guns. They actually have gotten a lot of press on that, it's a wonderful play, and they're getting a great turnout for that. And Chess is still playing the musical at Lakewood Theater for the Arts.
Is it Annie Get Your Gun?
No, this is Annie.
Cause you said it's coined guns.
I know, I know, I did, but it's, no, it's not Annie Get Your Guns, it's Annie, you know, Tomorrow, Tomorrow.
Paul, you start with that song.
Oh, good luck. I do wanna build on what Martha first spoke about, and that was the group of people we met with yesterday that brought forth their concerns on the Upper Willamette with the issue of erosion of the banks as a result of some of these wakeboards and wakeboarding and some of the bigger-
Paddle boats? Paddle boards?
It's wakeboats. These are motorized.
Motorized boats.
They're made to make a wave.
They go real fast.
Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, so what happens is they actually create a huge wave, and then they can ride their wakeboards on, on that wave, and it creates, it's like, just imagine, you're out there, you're out there in the ocean, you want a nice big wave, and you wait, you wait for nature to deliver the big wave. Well, this is like an artificial creation, so to speak, of-
Okay, now I see. And then the erosion is from the wave?
Yeah. Yeah, and they ride, they ride the wave. The, what, and the unnatural part of that is on our rivers, our rivers don't really see those kinda waves and that, at that frequency. And so, the one gal brought in pictures, and in a way that she kinda made a video of it, and it really showed within a very short amount of time, just the soil, the shore just dropping off into the water, and just one section of this. And so, when you think about that in its totality, the, we're losing some landmass, and people are losing, apparently, they're actually gonna move some of their buildings on their properties as the, as the, their soil's being eroded away on their property. So, their property's getting smaller, but I think we have a concern about that because that's not, again, there's a natural sense of that when we have high river flows, we have some erosion that takes place, but I think it's the unnatural elements of that that are creating some problems. And I'm, you know, and to my surprise, when Martha first brought this subject up, I just go, "Well, gee, that's coincidental, I've actually hearing about it, people in my area in Old Grove on the Lower Willamette where they're having problems with that." Of course, there's noise that comes with that as well, I mean, just the, the motors themselves, but I think the people that are bringing the, what the locals are bringing to me is similar erosion issues is their concern, not so much the noise that comes with it. So, I guess we need, need a help, and I think it's more of a legislative fix, but I'm definitely very shocked to hear the rate of that erosion, which is like, kinda concerning for me. This is affecting not just Clackamas County, but Meamhill County, Marion County, and things upstream as well as local, and the Mollama County probably as well, but our concern obviously is, is just the health of the river that runs through our area and so on.
And they have a specialist, don't they, coming out to-
Yeah, they have someone from what country?
I think New, I wanna say New Zealand?
Fortunately, they got someone to volunteer, an expert in the field to come and volunteer and do some testing, and actually on former Commissioner, current State Representative Bill Kenner's property, actually do the testing right, right there on the sea, on these, the cycles and take some measurements. But anyhow, it was good, it was good.
You wanna go surfing, go to the ocean.
Yeah, and there's probably parts of the world where the waves are bigger than they are. It's kinda dangerous to do here in Oregon, right?
You gotta be careful of the rocks.
And a little cold, yeah.
Exactly.
The, the hot issue in my neck of the woods, besides the wakeboarding issue, is over the weekend, we had a, it's been a tough few years here, but we've had a property that was sold that had several hundred trees on it, three hundred and twenty of which were cut down to make way for development here over the weekend, and there's a number of things that are actually going on concurrently in my neighborhood with the storage facility and a number of things. And I think it really gets down to, you know, we, a lot of us love our neighborhoods, and we cherish those neighborhoods for what they are. And another, getting back to the earlier speaker, Claire, another state planning goals or things that we find ourselves conflicted is that in order to sometimes protect the farmland, we are creating zoning that encourages more density development in very nice neighborhoods that are very well-treed and have a lot of natural aesthetics. And, you know, our tree ordinances really can't do, they're not, they're not designed to stop development, but it's not people that are just willy-nilly cutting trees down, it's development that sometimes accelerates that to a degree that the neighborhood doesn't like. But very sad day because we had our picnic here a couple weeks ago, and I wasn't here last Thursday, do, doing some county business elsewhere. I was not in attendance last Friday, I did wanna speak to, we held that picnic in the shade and in the beauty and the backdrop of those trees, and the stand of trees in particular that we all felt, you know, was important to the neighborhood, but out of our control to stop. And a number of people that are aware of our stand as far as the commission and so forth were aware of that, but however, a lot of new people that learned of the trees being down have made a lot of comments that were pretty negative towards the commissioners. I think there's a misunderstanding that the county commissioners actually approved this, that we actually go through a process where we say, "Yeah, we're good, we're gonna allow that to happen." Well, we don't, we're not in that position. And we actually have a hearings officer who actually dealt with that particular property, and by state law, he ended up ruling in favor of, really, cause it complied with state law, so he was in the particular zoning that we had in play. But it really goes back to, if we really wanna customize our communities and preserve those neighborhoods for what they are, either the county or a future city can actually customize their zoning with the community in embracing that, of course. If they're not, if it's not something the community wants, then it won't happen, but it's very complex, it's not easy to do, but I have found, no matter where we are in the county, and we have a very beautiful county, we have beautiful areas, we have beautiful farms, a lot of natural features, we have beautiful neighborhoods, and people wanna preserve that. And I think it's imperative, I think our opportunity as the commission, and we expressed this at a retreat here a couple weeks ago, that we can actually maybe encourage development where it's mostly, where it's not redevelopment, it's new development in areas like the Sunrise Corridor, where we can, that, those development pressures can go there as opposed to into areas where there, it's tumultuous, it's, it's, it's very turbulent, it really creates a lot of problems with communities and neighborhoods. So, that's been my, my little world, my reality as far as, and the commissions to some degree as well, as far as just trying to deal with some of those pressures and phone calls and emails that have come by. And I do wanna also recognize the good work our staff's doing on the Veteran Shelter Project. We've had Congressman Schrader out here last Wednesday, and not this Wednesday, but a week ago Wednesday, and we're making some good progress and hoping to be able to on our opening day mid-September. More information on that will come out, but we are, a lot of good staff work on trying to pull that together. I wanna acknowledge everyone that's worked on that, and we'll have a better opportunity at times to actually name names and, and recognize people for their good work. But we're all busy, you all hear about what we all do, and fortunately, there's five of us to do some of those things, and because we can't be all in the same place at the same time, and almost every day, day goes by, and I wanna be in three different places at the same time, and I can't. So, we're all picking up a load, and I appreciate, appreciate everyone's efforts in that way. So, until next week, and we'll see you at the fair.
Yeah, thanks for that lead in, Paul. Next week, we will not have a business meeting in here. Instead, it'll be in Cambie at the County Event Center. That's at ten AM to eleven thirty approximately. If you get there before, I gotta look at, before, oh, before ten, you get in free, and we'll all be participating in the parade, and we end there, and then we start our meeting at ten. And very similar to this meeting, there'll be an opportunity for citizens to speak, and of course, we're there to celebrate the volunteerism of the Clackamas County Fair Board. So, the fair begins August fourteenth to the eighteenth at, in Cambie at the fairgrounds or the event center. Tuesday, August fourteenth, is Fred Meyer Family Day. Yeah, I'm gonna say, I think I'm gonna say that. And it's also the Kitty Kaper Parade, which begins at ten AM at Night School and ends at the fairgrounds. Wednesday's the Portland Spirit Senior Citizen Day. Tuesday again is our, our meeting, I mean, Thursday is our meeting. And then Friday is Star Rentals First Response Day, which is a free fair admission for all police, fire, paramedics, veterans, and armed service members. And Saturday, OVS Salute to Agriculture Day. And also, the rodeo is all those days?
Yes.
Yes?
There's a wide variety of events, mostly in the evenings. I highly recommend it, it's an excellent rodeo. Personally, I like to go on Saturday night where we take tickets for Rotary, and then I get to watch Saddle Brunk, which I think is the best event personally. Others would argue with me and say Bull Riding is a better event, but I like Saddle.
So, one thing, you know, and this is a issue like two good things. You know, protecting the neighborhood also prevents housing from being built. We have lots of kids, I mean, who, we had a lot of opportunity to buy homes. You know, we have lots of places we can buy homes, and protecting your neighborhood's a great idea, but if we can't build homes, that means we have to go out further and further, which impacts farmland.
Transportation.
Transportation and many, many things. So, I think we have to work to preserve our community's character, but allow some development and opportunity to build homes that our children, they're our children, children in some case, someday can afford to buy and build wealth. So, I think that's important. You know, and the other, one other issue I thought, and I don't know how much we've talked about this publicly, but you know, we're looking at building a courthouse, our current courthouse is in downtown Oregon City. It's way undersized, we don't have enough courtrooms, and families might be waiting for support payments many, many, many months. And over fifty percent of the homeless in Clackamas County are families. And, and some of that is because of domestic violence and other issues, and lack of the ability to get support, and some of that is because they're held up. The other thing is jail overcrowding. You know, it might be, a trial might be held up many months, sometimes maybe a year, and consequently, those people are held up in our jails. So, it's, we have a really great opportunity in Clackamas County because the state's gonna step up and pay fifty percent of the cost of the court-related, court-related costs. And we're now in the process of studying the site, what kind of structure, we've kinda focused on laminate-
Cross laminated timber.
Cross laminate timber. And, and building a facility that, that is affordable, but at the same time will be adequate for a very fast-growing county. I think if you drive around Oregon City alone, you'll see a lot of new neighborhoods popping up. And matter of fact, I've been remodeling my house for over a year, and I've seen neighborhoods from dirt to people moving in since I started remodeling. And so, this is a growing community, and we need to address our shortage in courtrooms soon. And also, downtown Oregon City parking has always been a challenge as long as I can remember. And we have an opportunity again for the state to help us, and we're gonna be talking to you about how we can make this happen. And one of our judges who recently retired actually came to the county many years ago, was told that, "Don't worry, we're building a new courthouse." And he retired the other day, still with no courthouse. So, I think we're committed to making this happen some way. And I, and we need your commitment as citizens of Clackamas County to make sure we get this done too. So, we'll be talking to you, and I look forward to breaking ground up here in Oregon City for a new courthouse in the next couple of years. So, I wanna thank you, and don't forget the county fair, and we'll see you in Cambie on Thursday, August sixteenth. Remember, if you get there before ten AM, it's free. Thank you, have a great weekend.